That was on the day after the championship. And we sealed it in plastic.
Oh, yeah.
So that 50 years from now, you know, this is, this is history. I mean, this is something that we're going to remember. So I said, yeah, this is much better than 50 seconds.
Just so you get a message, can you?
I'm going to look at it and read myself and then seal it up. We have hundreds of newspapers, even about 20. You know, the 36th, I mean, good lord, we got loads of them. I love looking at the advertisements. Those are always fun.
Yeah. The cost of things.
Yeah, that's the other thing.
I know.
Back, are we going to have some commissioners or this commissioner meeting?
Ah, you know.
Yeah, is it optional?
They got two minutes.
Yeah, I noticed. I know they're in chambers, so.
3.1. The only reason I know is I think something's spoken at Jersey Shore. And he also said that another girl approved that the school board had to go.
Yeah, I get that, yeah. There is a good polling, but yeah. Hello, hello, welcome. Glad to have Commissioner, uh, for meeting. Presenting.
Good to see, good to have a commissioner, is that what she wants to do? I just registered that now. Takes me a while. Hi, welcome back.
Thank you.
How are you feeling? You look good.
A hundred million times better than I was, so. Yeah, good. Focus on my health and I feel much better.
Yeah.
Those are, welcome, welcome. Keep bugging them, keep bugging them.
Please. There's a timer right there. It just made me think you guys are like keeping everybody under two minutes or something.
How that time?
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I like that. Morning.
Morning.
What do we have? Morning, everyone.
Oh, yeah. I only heard you because I'm right here. No, it's not.
Good morning, we ask you to please rise for your open prayer and pledge allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, as we gather today, we praise you for this day and your purpose for it. We pray that when we, what we have prepared and you bless it, we'll apply our efforts as only you can. You originally blessed our valley. We remember 50 years ago, catastrophic flood of Agnes. Its aftermath, we saw our neighbors and communities come together, refilled their homes and businesses. That goodness and love is still evident throughout our valley. We ask you for your guidance, so we walk fully in the way that provides your blessings and goodness. Establish the work that you have at our hands performed. And bring us to decisions and outcomes that are in accordance with your will. We ask you to keep us alert in a dark world that thrives on hate, dissension, and conflict. May we rise above unity, peace, and love, so our valley thrives in your goodness. Let your peace rain down upon us as we seek you first, seek you first in all that we do. These things we humbly pray in your name.
Three cents or approximately sixty-four percent were general funds. Grants and other sources amounted to one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and seventy-four cents, or approximately twenty-two percent. RMS, their invoices this week were forty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-one cents, or approximately seven percent. And about another seven percent were escrow funds for forty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty-two cents.
Questions?
Yeah, I did have questions. I asked the coroner to come down, Chuck Keesling. There was under cash requirements, I don't know what page it was, but forensic.
Pathology associates, there was an autopsy or something.
So if Chuck would like to come up and explain the charge and what's all included in that.
These charges, yes, they're higher than what we normally see. However, these were infant deaths. These tragically, one was in January, one was in February of this year. These cases are very complex. They take a tremendous amount of time on my staff's part, and we have to leave nothing unturned with these investigations. So the pathologists do the same thing. And so those, as you'll see in the breakdown on these invoices, there's additional testing that gets done to be able to, you know, try to figure out why these babies are dead. We owe that to our families, to be able to say, this is what happened. Unfortunately, the one case, even despite all of the work that we did, the cause of death was still undetermined. I can't help that. You know, there's only one person, and that's the God above, that says it's time, and we have to deal with those cases. So unfortunately, this is why, one of the things, this is a small part of those investigations. We spend countless hours up and down the interstate for these autopsies to be done in Allentown. It's not, folks see like the coroner's offices, and they think it's like CSI on TV. You'll notice these invoices just came through six months after, five months after the death occurred, because all the testing takes that long to get all that stuff done. We're still doing work on these cases even today. That's why for ten years I've been saying, we need a facility here. We need, I have ongoing discussions with Geisinger and Scott Lynn, the Montour County coroner, about recruiting a forensic pathologist. We spend, it's a tank of fuel every time we run a truck down there. It's personnel time, it's law enforcement time, because they're traveling down for these autopsies. And it's, you know, it's just part of what we have to do. I don't have a choice, I can't bargain shop for forensic pathologists, there's only about four hundred in the country. So it's very difficult to be able to recruit those. However, I do have Geisinger conversations, they would like to, they're a level-one trauma center, UPMC is a trauma center. So there's those cases, many of those need to be autopsy. And it would be nice if we had that resource here in LeCombe County versus traveling up and down the interstate. You know, as I've said before, my staff, myself, we're being exposed, you know, through, when everyone else, a lot of departments were shut down, my office has been going nonstop through this whole COVID thing. We just have another drug death probably this year that we're dealing with now. We've got white powder, meth, fentanyl, you know, we're handling this stuff. And again, we're taking stuff home to launder stuff in our home laundry, potentially exposing our family members to the same substance that killed someone. And we don't have the resources to be able to decontaminate vehicles and decontaminate our personnel safely. So I understand the questions about the, and I kind of got off track, but I thought this is, again, I think the public needs to understand this. And, you know, we've talked about it, we need to get this building project moving. It's not getting, our office is on track to have another record year. We've been dealing with over seven hundred cases in the last two years. We're on track over three hundred so far this year, so we're going to be back at the same kind of numbers with or without COVID. And unfortunately, these are tragic situations that we have to deal with, and I can't, you know, there's no way I can cut corners. We could save a lot of money if we had a facility here, so we're not trucking up and down the interstate. But that's been a request for ten years, that nothing's happened, so. And with forty million plus in ARPA funding and COVID, or the ARPA funding and Act thirteen funding, I think now's the time, we've got to move forward with this project, so.
So has any other county, you know, surrounding county, if you put a forensic office up here, how many counties do you believe that?
Eleven counties were in that feasibility study. This is the pile of letters of support from coroners, from chief administrators, from Pennsylvania State Police, the police chiefs in our community, and I'm sure if I went out to other police chiefs outside of LeCombe County, they would support this as well. But the coroners all support it. They keep asking me, when are we getting a pathologist up here? Because we constantly are moving bodies to and from Allentown to do necessary duties that we have to do. And we haven't done an autopsy. Dr. Hill died in two thousand and eight, that was the last autopsy that was done at Williamsport Hospital. And the facility is not anywhere near capable of handling volumes of autopsies. There's one table, the cooler was filled to capacity in December of two thousand and twenty with the COVID deaths, and it's, it's been hit and miss on weekends, we're still running pretty high volumes through there.
Would any other county or entity such as UPMC or Geisinger contribute to funding?
I have not asked Geisinger, but I think if Geisinger gets us a forensic pathologist and is willing to take on that part of it, that's a huge expense, because that salary's going to be somewhere probably in the two-hundred-and-fifty to four-hundred-thousand-dollar-a-year range.
So are you saying that Geisinger would?
There's been talks, we've had discussions with them about, they've been trying to look and see if they can't recruit a forensic pathologist that could possibly service us here in LeCombe County, and they have facilities down there, but they are pretty maxed out. They're, they're tight with the volumes of, you know, the deceased that they bring into Geisinger Medical Center, they don't have the resources and physical capacity to be able to take on ten or eleven other counties. So we really need the facilities both places. If they can recruit the pathologist, you know, and we can provide the building for them to do the work in, you know, we're, we're in that, you know, step in that direction, so.
The facility they can take them down to for the autopsies in Allentown?
In Allentown, Cedar Crest, yeah.
How large is that? What size building is that?
Well, it's at the basement of the burn center down in Allentown. So it's their trauma burn center at Lehigh Valley Hospital at Cedar Crest. So it's in the basement of that facility there. Square footage, they have three autopsy rooms, office space for the pathologist, storage, you know, they have a walk-in core that's probably the size of this room, because of the volumes that come in and out of there, because of them being a trauma center or a burn center. And so it's, you know, it's a large facility, it's in the basement of their, you know, their operation down there.
Chuck, when we were down in Washington, we met over lunch with Congressman Musser. He wanted to know, you know, if he's elected in this area, what our top three priorities were. And we shared with him the levy, we shared with him the airport, we shared with him your office. And he said there was, there's a very similar situation down in Skook Hill County that they're experiencing with their coroner's office, which is where his home base is. You know, he was a hundred percent behind this project. We then went over and spoke with Senator Casey's office, spoke to his chief of staff, and they put in a million-dollar earmark for equipment towards this building, so. Now, as we move closer and closer, we have people there coming to join the team, to try to make this a reality.
Well, and as you know, I spent five years through this whole COVID pandemic as president of the state association, and the coroners across Pennsylvania, I mean, I'm fortunate, and I thank all of you for, you know, helping do things that we've done over the last twenty-two years that I've been in office. We're better in many counties than many of the counties with resources that we have. But it's only been because we've been, you know, plugging along and showing the need and identifying where we can save money, where we can generate revenue to be able to do things. So we're able to bring in some revenues that we weren't originally able to do. The coroners across the state, though, are generally, you look at the budgets, you see the numbers, we're providing a twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five operation with myself and four staff. And that's, that's large compared to some other counties. They have a coroner, and maybe a chief deputy coroner. They don't have office space, they're operating out of funeral homes, they're operating out of wherever. So there, the coroners across the state are so underfunded for their needs, and I hear this from many of the coroners, that have not even been able to get the resources that we have, like locally. So I applaud, you know, where we're at, but we still have a big, a huge step that needs to be. If you look at Pennsylvania, north-central PA is the only part of the state that does not have forensic pathology services. You have them in northeast, you have them in the northwest, you have them all across the south, with Pittsburgh, Allegheny, Westmoreland, you've got Philadelphia, you've got the central part of Dolphin County, they have pathologists down in that area. We have nothing up here. And it's desperately needed. I mean, with the drug deaths, the baby deaths, traumatic deaths, homicides, all those cases need to be autopsied, and it would be much, huge savings if we could do it locally versus the road trips to and from Allentown.
We just had it over, that, yesterday?
Monday morning, yeah, yeah. We just got the talks back. So that's an ongoing investigation, may require an autopsy. I'm going back up to have further discussions on that case. Okay. All right, so hopefully we can keep moving, that explains your questions.
We are, we are, we're definitely gonna.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to have you back.
Thank you. You were much better.
Okay, two point two, Maya, Mr. Contracts.
Good morning.
I have the forty thousand contract approved by the Director of Administration for the monthly pay.
So for the public, the Director of Administration, Ms. McDermott has authority to sign contracts under ten thousand dollars to keep things moving, and once a month, Ms. Toons gives us these for approval. Legal representation, inspected fire system, appraisal, camera system, cleaning services, and a renewal of a app space at RMS.
You have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Any further questions or comments? All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry. Thank you, Maya.
Thank you.
Moving on to info items, three point one, Jason Fink.
Morning, Jason.
Want to talk about LERTA?
Morning.
Good morning. I believe you all have a draft of an ordinance for a request of LERTA associated with a project involving West Pharmaceuticals and Jersey Shore. LERTA, as you all are aware, only affects development taxes associated with new development. It does not affect the current taxes that they would be paying. And it would be staged, what is being proposed right now is a seven-year LERTA, which is very similar to what Williamsport has right now in place, where they would have on their new addition, full abatement on that new addition for the first two years, and then graduate it up by twenty-five percent each two years, with the final year being at twenty-five percent. And then it would be fully taxable following that with the new addition. All current taxes would continue to be paid at the levels that they are right now, or at any future levels, if there were to be tax increases or decreases that would come into play, so. West is right now considering a project that would employ somewhere between one hundred and twenty-five to one hundred and fifty people. They are looking to make a decision on this here next month. They're looking at the Jersey Shore plant in addition to Kinston, North Carolina. We anticipate, in addition to that, an investment of somewhere between sixty-five to seventy million dollars for the project. And these would all be family sustaining wages, a fair number of them would also involve some technical expertise as well with what they're looking at. West has been very impressed with our market, as evidenced yesterday with the announcement, or actually, the starting of their project here in Williamsport. We understand in talking to them that LERTA is something that they would be, they would find helpful for them to be able to make the project work if they were to select it here. The Governor's Action Team has already been engaged, and it has presented to them their offer to be able to get the project here in Pennsylvania. And at this point in time, we're in the process right now, you may have seen, we've already been to both other taxing bodies, the LERTA, just as everybody would know, it involves all three of the local taxing bodies that are involved with the property tax. The school board, we presented to them, as well as the Jersey Shore borough, just about a week and a half ago. The school district is scheduled to vote here next week, I believe it's on Monday, and July eleventh is when the borough would be voting on their ordinance, so.
We want to thank them for that nice program yesterday that we attended in Williamsport, and it was interesting, the, the, one gentleman is obviously from Britain, had a British accent, the other one sounds like he's from Scotland, Ireland?
Ireland.
Ireland, yeah.
It definitely was in southeastern PA.
Right, it definitely, so we're becoming a multinational community, I wondered how they got in, did they, where did they fly?
That's an urban topic. Yeah.
But we're working on that, we're working on that, we don't take it lightly, because the ability of getting a company like West that has plants all over the world to come and can expand in an area like ours depends on having an airport where they can get people in and out in one day and not have to spend three days traveling to Williamsport. So we, we're going to work on that at the federal and state level. So hopefully, now, they don't need the support of all three, but it is, it is, right?
They need, they need the support of two of the three taxing bodies.
Two of the three taxing bodies, okay, okay. And this is separate from the hundred and fifty jobs that they're putting into the plant in Williamsport?
Well, actually, the Williamsport, the one that was announced yesterday, that project involved Jersey Shore already, there were a hundred, about a hundred and twenty, a hundred to a hundred and twenty jobs that they had committed to hiring last year when this was, project was announced last August, they were already in the process of hiring those people on Jersey Shore. So Williamsport, they're anticipating somewhere between thirty to fifty new jobs just at that plant.
Oh, got it, okay, so it's one twenty-five to one fifty between the two plants?
Right.
Yeah, well, it's obviously still a significant number of jobs.
Yes. Yep, and then this next project would be another one hundred and twenty-five to another one hundred and fifty jobs.
Yeah.
So potential for up to three hundred between the two plants.
Is it three hundred between the two plants? That's what I'm trying to understand, or is it?
It would be somewhere between two hundred and fifty to three hundred.
Oh, two fifty?
If we get this one, it would be somewhere between two hundred and fifty to three hundred, correct.
Between the two plants.
Right.
You know, I was impressed with yesterday was, you know, I stayed in the back with some of the employees that I knew, and how they really respect the management there in West. And you can tell when they talk about teamwork, it is a team. And so it's not a surprise that they're, they're growing astronomically. But the one thing that I did catch, and I've seen this not just with the West, is the admiration they have for you and the chamber. And when you think about Chamber of Commerce, you think, ah, it's, it's an organization that tries to bring in jobs, you know. But I don't think anybody has a clue as to how much you have to know, okay? From power, energy, okay?
Water.
Water personnel. And it kind of like, it's, it's a branch of like our planning. I mean, our planning department gets involved in so many different aspects of economic development, and here, you know, and that's who I always gave the credit to, because they, you got to do a lot of research. So these jobs, they come in, but at a cost. And it was pretty impressive of, especially the, I think he was the CEO of the company, saying that, you know, one of the biggest reasons was the relationship he had with you. And so we can't thank you enough for the energy, the effort that you put into that, that position. And I hope, yeah, you stick around for, stay off the bikes.
My wife doesn't let me ride my bike outside anymore.
The statement was, you won't find a hardworking chamber, head of chamber.
Right, wow.
Yeah, so, and we, we want to thank you for your hard work, and we want to thank the West Pharmaceutical for their investment and commitment to our community, because they are growing, and they do extremely important work. And they shared that with us yesterday, life-saving and life-enhancing work that they do within their, their plants.
It is definitely a good quality company that we have in our market, that are, as noted by Tony, the, the employees feel a team there. And that's, you know, from, and we work a lot with all the companies, but have an opportunity to work with them over the years as well, and it's evidenced by being able to walk in there, we've been able to take schools through their superintendents, career tech educators through there, and every time, it's, you know, just a really vibrant place. And I think it's because they have a purpose as well, and they understand what that purpose is, because what they do does, you know, contribute to others' lives, so. And I do have to note, you know, while we may not work on projects all the time together because of the nature of certain projects, we do have a great working relationship with their planning department. Whenever we need to reach out to them to pull them into stuff, they've been a great partner with us, so. You know, and things don't happen just through efforts of one, it's the whole team, so.
So on the LERTA, it abates the property taxes for seven years.
On the new development.
On the new development.
On the new development.
So in year, when does the LERTA begin? Does it begin after completion of the project?
Yes, they, they, it would begin after completion of the project, when the prop, when the property is assessed for the new addition, yeah.
So, and then for seven years, so the first two years, year one and two, they'll pay twenty-five percent?
The first two years, they pay nothing on that first two years.
Okay, oh, I thought they paid twenty, okay. Year three and four, they're doing?
Twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent in, in, for both years?
Correct.
Then five and six, twenty-five percent?
Then it's, no, it steps up to fifty percent.
Okay, that's where, so it's fifty, and then the last year is?
It's seventy-five.
Seventy, oh, gotcha, seventy-five, right, and then, okay.
And then it's fully assessed after that.
Fully assessed, so it's actually the assessed value that is the taxable body, a taxable value?
Correct.
Okay, so let's say it's assessed at two million dollars, in year one and two, there, there's no tax?
Correct.
In year three and four, they pay twenty-five percent of the assessed value?
Correct.
Twenty-five percent of the two million, okay, and year fifty percent, and then year seven, seventy-five, okay?
Yep.
Okay. And then by year eight, they're in full?
And in year eight, it's fully on the tax rolls.
Yep, okay.
Commissioner, that's only on the improvement?
Right, right, only on the improvement, right? Okay. All right, who are we gonna, we want to vote on, you want a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
No.
This is an information.
Oh, it's only information?
Yeah, we, I believe you have, as an ordinance, you have to have another.
So for the public, they may understand, but why are these guys so willing to approve this so quickly? Well, because the problem is that, you know, companies do look at other places, and unfortunately, until we have national legislation, which sort of has a uniform taxing system, you have states competing with each other, you have, and it's always a fine line between racing to the bottom and trying to find, LERTA is actually one of the less detrimental, I should say, taxes, I mean, some of the other taxing.
It's not K O Z.
It's not K O Z, so, so we're still collecting, we're still collecting taxes in other ways and so forth. Whereas, for example, the K O Z, they're not paying the earned income tax, they're not paying the sales tax, they're not paying the state tax or the local. This is a less, it's kind of a compromise, but it does give us the ability to give them some relief, yeah.
Tier system over you.
Right, over seven years. And presumably, it gives an entity such as this business or any other business time to sort of get rolling with production and get up to full speed?
Correct.
Because it may, you know, obviously, you open the doors, you're not hitting your hundred percent target, you'd like to, but, so, okay, well, thank you, Mr..
We should have the ordinance for next week.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, you could certainly probably tell the other bodies, if you wanted, that we, I mean, we can't tell you how we would vote.
No, but I, I would want to know, you'll be voting next week then?
Yes.
Yeah, because I will be meeting with the school board.
We'll be on the agenda next week for vote.
Okay, perfect, and I'll be here, thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Actually, Commissioner, this is the solicitor.
Yes.
It has to be advertised for a minimum of seven days and a maximum of sixty days. It probably won't be next week, because my understanding is, we won't have the seven days by the time we get this to the advertisement media, so it's probably the week after.
We can put it on for the week of the seventh or the fourteenth?
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be here.
Okay, well, as you know, which week you put it on.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, solicitor.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next informational item, three point two. All right, Maya.
This is just to acknowledge the county's testing proposal for Greater Lines for Trail Systems Wayfinding Project. We're looking for consulting services, consulting services for the design of a strategic wayfinding system for better navigation of the Greater Lines for Trail Systems.
Okay. Any questions for Maya? Three point three. Thank you, Maya.
Yep, and then the next item I have is that we will be rejecting all bids that we received for the Williamsport Reef Region Relief Well Rehabilitation and Replacement Project. It's our intention to rebid this sometime in September with help of the US Army Corps of Engineers.
Okay, we asked Shannon in the audience, do you have any comments on that, Shannon? No? Okay, so, wanted to give you the opportunity.
That's okay.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Okay, action items. Okay, four point one through four point three, Kristen Glaughlin, talking about amendments to subrecipient agreements for C D B J. Morning, Kristen.
Good morning, commissioners. Would you like me to go over all three of them?
Yeah, please.
The first one is for the, an amendment to the subrecipient agreement between the county and the borough of Muncie for the Muncie Library and Removal Architectural Barrier Project. This both increased the amount that they have available by forty thousand, seven hundred, forty-five dollars and seventy cents, that is a result of a budget revision that we had done a few months ago, and also extends the termination date of their contract. The second one is also an amendment to subrecipient agreement, this one between the county and the Center for Independent Living for their rooftop air conditioning unit project. This also, this just extends the termination date on that agreement. And the third one is another.
Excuse me one second, I'm going to stop you for the first two.
Okay.
And we'll take a vote on the first two.
Okay.
And should we have any kind of a motion on action item four point one, four point two?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
And any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, four point three was not on the agenda originally.
Oh, okay.
So, Director, it's at the top there, it's his additions. Action item? I'm sorry, I missed that. Commissioners, senior approval to add action item four point three, vote to approve amendment to subrecipient agreement with Montour's Well Borough with twenty seventeen C D B J.
I'll move to approve the addition to the agenda.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Thank you, I apologize.
Thank you.
Commissioner, if you're going to have to allow public comment to the extent that there is any on the added item?
Okay, at this time, any public comment on action item four point three?
Well, I think he means we have to have a public comment on adding it. Is that what you mean, adding it?
Yes.
That's what you mean, okay.
Yeah, I'm asking for your public comment.
Okay.
No, sir, I, it's not the comment on the adding, it's the comment on the added item, whether there is any public comment.
Okay, well, you haven't had a motion yet.
No.
You have a motion?
Yes.
I'll move to approve four point three amendment for Montour's Well Borough.
I'll second that motion.
All fair side? All in favor, say aye.
Sweet, I want a public comment.
Any, I'm sorry, public comment at this time? Okay, here ain't none? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Okay, I think we got through that.
All right.
Solicitor, we good?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right.
All right, 4.4. Commissioner, seeking your approval to the amendment number one, to the engagement letter with Baker Tilly. This is to add some services to the letter of engagement, which is traditionally for the yearly audit, and this is to make some improvements in the office of budget planning.
Okay, it's a 2022 budgeted item, available. And our motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Was there any comments or questions?
No, I'm not sure this was budgeted, but we have it in our contingency.
It says available.
Available, oh, that's what you mean, okay, I got it, yep. All right, this will help us, we've been really short-staffed in the budget and finance office and the combination of trying to train new people and also, you know, these are complicated projects, so Baker Tilly will be able to help us.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
4.5 and 4.6, Maya.
Yes, the first item I have for you, 4.5, is to pre-agreement with Lieutenant Nessus, this is a budgeted item for the prison, this is to assist our victims providing legal research and terminals for the prison and use and access any support if they need.
Okay, can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
The next item I have for you is to approve the bids for drainage work at White Peter Golf Course to Extreme Golf Community. We're awarding a portion of that project to them, mostly, we're thinking it's going to be about $77,000, the heritage and vintage sports areas that they're going to be working on.
Okay, and this comes out of their budget that they presented to us.
Right.
At the initial 2022 budgeted items, talks with them.
That's a significant point, that these are coming out of revenues from the golf course.
Golf course, not coming out of.
Not coming out of our general fund revenues, so that's a, that's an improvement.
Probably not coming out of their revenue.
Right, not the landfill revenue.
Well, they say they contribute.
That's important to point out.
Right, no, it really is, in all seriousness, because in the past, we would have had to tap into property tax revenue, but this is actually revenue that they've earned, so that's good news.
Okay, have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, 4.7, Jerry Kennedy. If I support or no?
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Before you this morning, we have a maintenance renewal for our downtown and Lysoc core network switches for the amount of $27,947.44. It is a budgeted item.
Okay, have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Any questions for Mr. Kennedy? Here ain't none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So carry, thank you, Jerry.
4.8, Jason Stone.
Yes, sir.
Amendment with Highway.
Commissioners, 4.8 for your approval of amendment with the agreement that we have with Highway equipment. It is a, another, this will be the second amendment, number 21. This is a four-year agreement to begin with, but we're into our second amendment. Shop rate, overtime, field rate, pretty much everything went up around $5 to $7. This is, we only use Highway for their service work on an additive basis, but we do need to keep the current rate as they are.
Okay, motion approved.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Any personal comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, 4.9, Ken. Agreement with Larson.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
This is an agreement with Larson Design to engineer the east parking lot or drive-through area of Third Street Plaza to fit as much parking area in there as we can.
We're looking at 40, roughly 40?
Yeah, roughly 40, I think we kind of came up like 41, but when they're finished engineering, we'll have a solid number on that.
Okay. As we build well in the center and have more offices moving over into our Third Street Plaza, we'll need additional parking over there.
Absolutely, well, yes. Hopefully it solves that problem for us.
Agreed. Any additional comments, questions? Have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carry. Thank you. Thank you, Ken.
And 4.10, Sam.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a request to approve a subscription to purchase Streetlight insight data. So this is data that we're able to collect through this purchase agreement, it's for a one-year subscription. The cost is $20,000. We're working with Streetlight, the original cost was somewhere around $35,000, but they actually were able to put together a specific package, much like Comcast would do with their TV channels, to allow us to access data for origin, destination, trip speed, travel time, commercial vehicle metrics, things of that nature. They used this service in the CSVT study, Michael Baker did it for us. This gives us the opportunity to do that ourselves. Scott Williams will be able to use this for the L R D P update that's going on and other transit, or sorry, transportation planning activities.
Okay, great. Have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, so.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, comments?
I have a couple, you know, as we're, we're talking to constituents and about all their issues, and there are many, from inflation to the gas and work, all this and that, and I want everybody to understand, you know, I've been in business for 35 years and a two-by-four, we used to be able to pick up for $2.40. It's now $10.49, okay? A 250-foot roll of 12-two wire, right, went for $27, it's now $167, okay? And what's alarming is, it's alarming to me anyway, is that we've never been so busy. Our carpet went up 35% just in selling, right? And I mean that just in a four-month period. So when we see what's happening now, it makes no sense to us whatsoever, it's actually scary. And when we see the people starting to tighten it up with the interest rates going up, why I'm bringing this up is because people will stop spending. It's going to be inevitable, it's going to be very difficult on them. And what, what is alarming to me as a county commissioner is that people will start to lay off people, and they will stop their spending, and they will ask for property tax reduction. And if you haven't noticed what's going on right now with the appeals from the big box stores and even more appeals from our business community and retail, office space, right? Times are changing and those buildings will be appealed and they will most likely win. And all of that loss of revenue is going to go back into the hands or on the shoulders of our residents. This is alarming and we need to take, we need to have a plan. We better put it together as fast as we can because I see this happening not only in the residential market, I mean, commercial market, but the residential market as well. That's one of the things. And when, I read in the paper a couple days ago about legislators giving a tax forgiveness on the gas tax, okay? I think this is a terrible idea and for a number of reasons. But the most important is when I see to get, the one, the one representative wanted to get it for the rest of the year, okay? And they could draw down on revenue surpluses and federal relief money. So let me bring this back up because I mentioned it a couple of years ago, that those surpluses in our state, for the most part, was kind of like federal spending. They had to borrow it and then they touted, and this is, this is a Republican legislature too, just so that you know, back then, that borrowed this money only to tout during the election that they had surpluses. It's a lie. Our state is not that, it's not solid, okay? And this is going to end up being a problem for us. We can no longer spend money we don't have. And I'll just conclude it like this. Russia has the ruble, which was down to nothing, and they said they're going to start backing their money. And now it's up another, it's 25% higher. And our dollar is, what's happening to our dollar? You know, I'm sure there are a lot of people, and I think it was back in 1988, when it was Black Monday, I'm trying to remember, but many retired people had to come out of retirement because they didn't have funds.
And that was around October 87.
87, that's right, October of 87, you're correct. I'm fearful that with this inflation, the same will happen to our people. And we just have to be on guard and start, start to plan for something that, especially the property tax appeals, so.
You know, on that note, we really need to look at the assessment too, because the property tax assessment now is down the common level ratio, I think it was 54.
54.
54%. So the inequity in how people are paying taxes is also going to bear on that.
Yeah, but last, last year it was 59, now it's down to 54.
Yeah.
And if that, if people don't understand what that means, is that that's how much align what the real values of properties are in our, in our county. That's substantial. Typically, you trigger reassessments at about, boy, I'm going back, I'd have to say 75%, 80% is when you start to look at those evaluations. And we're down to 54. I'm not saying the timing's right, but there's going to be a lot of people that are hurting.
Well, we know that even if we sign a contract tomorrow, it'll be probably three years before an assessment goes into effect because we have to get in line to do it and then we have to have it done, and there's a backlog, so.
If we did it now, it'd be about 2020, 2026 till then.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Public comments? Ah, I was going to make a reference today.
Yes, I am, I'm going to be a homer. In the words of Charles Dickens, it's the best of times and the worst of times, so yes, I agree with Commissioner Messer, these are dark times, but little town of Montgomery had history last Thursday when their girls softball team won the first state championship in Montgomery history.
Undefeated.
And, and they had an incredible year, but it was honestly, what I think is the most significant was the way the community responded. I mean, it was just, it meant, I didn't follow a single game, I'll be honest with you, I didn't, I don't follow girls softball, it's not one of my things, but I was riding in the truck in the parade and celebrating with them. I mean, everybody in town was out on the streets. It was just a really a great moment. And I just, I just think, again, we, sports make a lot of difference, and we are so blessed here in Williamsport that we have this Little League World Series and, and I don't know, if you've ever traveled around and you go around the country and you mention Williamsport, everybody hears of it, but what's even most interesting to me is that, is that these people will always remember their years, the best times, you know, we were, we were three games away from Williamsport or two games away from Williamsport, that's how they measure success, how close they got to Williamsport. And so, I don't know, I just, I'm just celebrating sports today and young people and how it, how it has a tendency and a thing to bring people together that I don't think anything else really does because we're all in the same boat right now. We're all just really just tightening our belts and just trying to get through and hope tomorrow's going to be better than today. And out of nowhere comes a bunch of girls who just work together, actually, they've been a team for probably like the last 10 years, so they've known each other since they were small. And that's really the only way Montgomery, Jason Fink, I mentioned to him, he should have, he has the last undefeated high school football team that Montgomery ever had was back in the 90s, but those guys grew up together too. They all played the same thing. And that's again, the cohesiveness of a small community, how even when you're small, if you just kind of get to know each other and work together and teamwork teaches you something. So congratulations to, to the folks in Montgomery, but to all the success that we've had over the years here and, and, you know, you, you guys are very good about recognizing these, these folks.
I'm sharing with you, I reached out to Daphne Bowers and she has her athletic director, she's, they're going to contact us because I want to bring them in to, for the three of us to honor the team. And we had mentioned them last year, or last week, we mentioned they were going out and playing about the time we had a Commissioners meeting and the news was fantastic. I agree with you, there's nothing that brings a community closer than watching their kids succeed. And I often, with my 20 years of coaching, I always told the kids, there's nothing better than hanging out with your friends, growing up, and winning a championship with your name on their back and your hometown across the front.
Yeah.
And there's nothing better as a kid. And a lot of these kids have the opportunity to do that and it's something they'll always have, that they can never be taken from, they'll be talking about it 50 years from now.
Yes, and I said, that's why I bought a, I did, I bought a Sun Gazette, I'm ashamed to say, but I really did. Don't be ashamed to say it, it's our hometown newspaper. For the sake of putting it into plastic that I donated to the Historical Society, that you're right, 50 years from now, this is history, this is, we're pulling out all those, you know, ones from 72 from the flood, 50 years from now, those old gals will get together and regale each other with stories of what happened in, in June of 2022, so, thank you.
I love to follow the, I know, I like to go see the Fast Pitch Girls play.
Ah, you do.
And what's incredible is they're good. I mean, they are good, they play as well as any boys and men's teams, they are excellent athletes. And so if you, if you let the women dictate whether you're going to be, because they're women playing, you should watch them play because they're just, they're just awesome to watch.
Well, this must be a good team.
Well, if it is, you don't get there without being a good team.
So look forward to the future, Commissioner speaking, having them here, celebrating on their accomplishments. Okay, thank you. Morning, Tom.
Morning. How are you?
Good, how are you doing?
So I'm out in Williamsport. Thank you for.
Whoops. He likes notes.
Yeah, well, it's not a big deal. Well, I already mentioned Fire Tree, it is a good organization, my granddaughters would go there, they had, they were going homeschool, but Fire Tree did offer, I guess maybe they still do some economic courses or some things, they would do some arts and crafts or something like that during the day in the school year, it's really good organization. And then, the airport, I missed that meeting, so. And then, oh, the airport, I missed that meeting, so that is pretty important, and hopefully, if something comes along with that. Any more movement, anything coming with that, or?
It's difficult, and especially now with the shortage of pilots across the nation. It's having even more of an impact.
That's right.
Part of the problem, Tom, is that there's, I've come to realize that there's a real power imbalance between the ability of an airport authority in Williamsport, Pennsylvania, and multinational airline to affect pressuring them to do something like fly here. So I really believe that we have to get federal and state elected officials on board to find ways to say to the airlines, "Look," especially, we saw this during the pandemic, if you're going to get millions and millions of dollars in subsidies from the government, then you have to be willing to serve all the parts of our country. Even parts that may not be profitable. Some people might say, "Well, why should you ask a business to serve a place that's not profitable?" Well, if they're going to take handout from the government, then they need to be able to serve, serve the people, or else we won't be served. I mean, small airports like ours--
Even major airlines like American just pulled out of three major airports.
Yeah.
And it's--
So it's a big uphill battle, but we'll keep pushing it, because we understand it's vital to the economic development of the region.
Yes. Yes, because like when you're dealing with transportation and you have the ability to fly, I think there is some obligation on that industry to provide in areas where it's actually feasible, they should do it. Just for the sake and for the safety, for the good of the country overall. And, because I know my buddy who was out Arkansas over the winter, and there was another, just like our regional airport shut down, because this is outside of Little Rock. And maybe, so now people have to drive another fifty miles to use the airplane, you know, if they need to fly in or out. And because we have such a, the ability of mobility, you know, we need to use it. And, yeah, I think, I think you do have a good point, though, you know, there should be some pressure on the legislators to do something with this, to get it up.
Another issue, though, is they're getting drawn, our rural pilots, you know, in your smaller airports. Those pilots are in demand, and so they're being drawn away from us to serve in major metropolitan areas, and, you know, at a rate of a hundred-and-twenty-five, a hundred-and-fifty thousand versus forty to sixty thousand dollars a year. So it put a shortage of pilots in there as well. What was encouraging, though, was the fact that they said there are enough students out there in, you know, being trained so to hopefully meet a demand.
Yeah. Well, I want to mention something about the vaccines when it comes to pilots. I don't know how many people keep up on that, but with the COVID shots, apparently, higher altitudes and with the problems of the spike proteins getting, causing mitochondrial problems in the heart and blood clotting. And getting these higher altitudes, that can cause more problems if you're pilots, and you have those shots, you have a better chance, a higher risk of developing a problem, you're not going to be able to fly again. That's just a fact, you're not going to hear a lot of stuff in the major media, because they don't, and then we have West Pharma. And we need, I think pharmacies, pharmaceuticals are important, but when they sign their contracts with the government and they work together in collusion, and they have, Big Pharma, they support, I guess, FDA over forty-four percent of their budget. You know, so pretty much conflict of interest there. So it's pretty damaging, but then, like I said, a place like West Pharma, we need, you know, hopefully, in our, getting this situation where you have to have something to help you survive, you know, emergency or something, but they're, they do serve a purpose. We just need to, need to have some real morality to them, I think, you know? It comes down to that, doesn't it, you know? An immoral society will wreak a lot of problems. I did get over to the Juneteenth celebration, it was pretty neat, it's good to see that. I guess, one thing, one speaker said it took him, took people two and a half years after Lincoln, you know, had the Emancipation Proclamation for the news to get down to Texas. Well, it wouldn't hold water unless we won the war. The war had to be won for that to take effect, you know, it's just, so they didn't find out till, I guess, two, three months later after the war was finally finished, I think. But that was a great time, I'm sure, you know, for people, and I think it's pretty neat how that did start. They started celebrating that right away, there's churches down there, and then they held on, so that's pretty good. But I did have concern with this, I guess called Catch and Release Center or whatever, being built over on Reach Road. Is that, is that something for illegal immigrants that they're going to be using for, or is--
That's not a catch and release, it's a, it's a center, it's more office space than anything. They're remodeling it, when it's done, they say, "We're welcome to come up to it." There's, there's to be two holding cells in there, and what they do is they put them in there, it's a place that can't be, they can't be kept there more than twelve hours.
Right.
Because there's no, there's not a facility for housing, it's a facility for temporary detention. Then they move them to a facility such as Clayton County, they have a contract with Clayton County, and then Immigration Judge will give a determination where they go from there.
Yeah.
But it's more, they, they use Allenwood right now, and they have to book weeks ahead just to get their boardroom. They have no space.
Yeah.
And so they, they need, it's more or less administration space is what they, when we went over to Allenwood and met with them last fall, that's what they told us, and they said, "When they finish, they'll invite us up there."
Yeah. How do we deal with people that, you know, you don't have any prejudice, you know, with people like coming in, but how do you deal with people, how do you find out if they're criminal or if they're, you know?
Well, that's what ICE's role is. If you know of anything, then report to ICE, the local ICE, and they'll investigate it. You know? Obviously, the administration has, this current administration has a different take on it. And so we have to go by what the laws are, and we'll definitely check in everything.
Yeah.
We welcome anyone who wants to be here, who is legal and law-abiding, and wants to work and take care of their families and do the right thing.
Right, right. Yeah, it's a, see, there's organizations that think the nuclear family is a bad thing. When I first heard the term "nuclear family," I thought, I never, I didn't know what that was, because I'm thinking, well, you know, does it have to do with the atomic age or what? You know, is there some, like a different blend of a family? But that's, the nucleus of a family is the father, mother, and the kids, and the people. There's organizations that want to destroy that. They think it's, they think it's just wonderful that you don't have a father around or a mother, or communities raising the kids without, it's crazy, because that's not, that's not how it's designed to happen. And it's really not good for the country or for any community. I guess, I guess there's some, oh, I know, there's one thing I wanted to mention to you last week. Maybe we could get some of the engineers, like from Penn Tech or, you know, some of the schools and the scientists together to work on some of these engines that were supposedly scrapped, you know, for gas saving and stuff, and come up with something. And maybe reproduce a hydrogen engine that supposedly was squashed. You know, I don't know, you know, something like that.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
All right, thanks.
Have a great day. Anyone else? Okay, anyone online, I don't see anyone.
Ms. Jacob Stocker says first. That's all. Jacob Stocker says first.
Okay.
That's his public comment.
All right. That's Jacob, he's a fine young man.
Why is he first?
Yep, and good to hear from you, Jacob.
Didn't want to leave him out.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it's nice to hear from you, good, good, good young man.
So we've completed our agenda, and we will meet again on next week, July, or excuse me, June thirtieth, last day of June. We'll see you at ten AM, thank you.
Come and introduce yourself to the East Commissioners.
Oh, Billy.
Is that Billy?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, we got to get over to, toward the--
Know Billy well.
We got to get over to, toward the center.
Yeah.
You know, look on the calendar, look at--